Coast time, not everybody is East Coast. Thank you all for being here today. Really appreciate folks showing up for this special meeting. I'm going to run through the agenda. If we have any changes, we can make them and then we can get started. So we have community comments at the beginning. We have approved the revised budget. And you can talk about that. And then we have any other business, any adjustments, changes, modifications to the agenda. Okay, a quick roll call. Who's here to do a roll call? Maybe that's me. Starting to take any notes, there are minutes. We're going to do minutes off the recording. But I don't have a list in front of me, but I can do this. Let's do a roll call. Okay, we have Andrew Pond.
Here.
Ethan Marr.
Here.
Gail Connolly.
Here.
Edie Branning. I'm here. Diane Kirsten Blitman, she's great. Susan Lilich. Susan. Stuart Morgio.
Here.
Tara Arneson.
Here.
Katie Nelson.
Here.
Allison Conan.
Here.
Heather Chadwick.
Here.
Eric Gildemeister.
Here.
Lisa Pollak.
Here.
Kevin Campbell. Abby O'Malley. Gracie Batsey.
Here.
Great, thank you, everybody. I'm going to open up the floor to community comments and then we'll see how the discussion on the budget goes. If we want to open it back up again after, we'll have that as an option for folks. Is there anybody here with community comments that we'd like to be heard before we have our board discussion of the other agenda items?
I'm Sarah Riley.
Ah, great. So just let us know, let us know the town that you're from.
Underhill.
Great. And then you have five minutes and we will probably not have a back and forth, but we're happy to hear your comments.
I won't take five minutes. I just very much hope for an explanation, preferably a clear explanation of what the new town rates are actually going to be and what they will and will not cover. I do not find much of the communication from the school board to be, let's just say, written in plain English, which it could be done. And anytime you want to give that, I will be very happy to read and/or hear it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other community comments? Okay, so Sarah has set us up really well because there is a lot to explain and a lot that is unclear and it's more than normal this time of year. And so apologies in advance to folks because I have never done, I've never had anything nearly this complex in budgeting in the 12 years that I've been doing this and in the
25 years.
years you've been doing this. So this is, yes, this is a lot. So how about, how about we start with a motion and we have our discussion after. So how about we get a motion to approve the revised 2024 budget as proposed in the fiscal year 25 budget detail. If somebody wants to give us exact numbers, that would be great, but we would need a motion and a second so that we could have our discussion. So move something. Great, move by Heather and seconded by Katie. And this would be for a budget of? Where's my number?
Two sixty nine one thousand three zero forty eight.
Sixty million one forty three zero
One twenty three zero forty eight.
One twenty three zero forty eight, thank you. All right, motion on the floor. Have some discussion. Do you want to set it up better than I have?
Uh, what has changed is we take now approximately $5.5 billion that we have designated for facilities, important facilities upgrades. So from the last meeting and the meeting before that, that is all that has changed in the, in the budget. The overall increase is 8.77. We talked about a lot of the, you know, the drivers. Still have additional money for facilities needs and capital projects, but some other significant drivers were salaries, insurance. Those were the real big ones.
So this budget is identical to the budget that the board saw in December?
I think just November.
In November. And only reduced polling and reduced by $5,700,000.
Five point five.
Five point five million since the last time the board approved it in, since it was approved in January. So it's the five and a half million dollars is reduced from the budget. Now, as John said, an 8.77% increase over last year's budget, which is pretty well in line with other Chittenden County.
Probably less, I mean, I wouldn't say less than many.
Than many Chittenden County schools. Any other discussion on the budget? Want to talk about process after the budget. Any questions, any comments? Lisa, is there anything that you want to say about the budget?
I don't think so. This was the same budget that was proposed at the last meeting that we had a split vote on, so nothing has really changed.
Andrew?
I know nothing's changed, but I'm hoping, John, maybe you can help, help refresh my memory, put back in perspective. How, how would you characterize this budget in terms of meeting student needs?
It will meet student needs. You know, it does limit what we can do for our facilities, but our enrollment is flat. We have more needs than we had, you know, last year and the year before. Student, particularly students that are now meeting very level standards. We've seen an increase in our special education population and our 504 population. So this is a budget that doesn't have a lot of extra in it, maybe done, but does meet students' needs.
Thank you. Other questions, other comments on the budget? There's a $1 discrepancy between the summary being on the sixty one twenty three zero forty eight. Yep. It's the sixty one twenty three zero forty eight, not the zero forty seven, but thank you. Are folks ready to vote on the budget? Yes. Okay, all in favor of approving this $60 million, $123,048 budget for fiscal year 2425? Please give me a thumb or say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, so the budget passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody. Let's talk about, let's talk about what happens next. Well, actually, let's talk about the warning. Which is part of what happens next.
So the warning is in the, we're rewarning all the budget and we're rewarning all the articles. There were two other articles. One was about moderator, treasurer and clerk. And then the other one is to, for the board to be able, in school districts, to borrow money when appropriately. So that, that and the budget are the three articles that are on the, that are on the warning. One other thing that has changed is that we added a statement that is underlined, just saying that this, this warning supersedes the one, the official warning for March 5th, which was dated January 15th, 2024, and was previously posted. So the other piece about this is I'd ask that you're going to get an email tonight of sign this electronically. If you can do it, you know, as soon as possible, that would be great. Jeff is going to do that as soon as he hears from me. And he'll, he'll give you instructions on, just like we did the last time, and I have to do that. That worked really, really well. So that we can post this tomorrow and then we'll be, you know, within the window, no less than 30 days and no more than 40 days posted before the budget is voted on on April 2nd.
Anything about?
Uh, just some of the locations have changed. So Richmond is going to do the, the voting at the Richmond Town Center and Underhill is going to do it at the Town Hall. Which we had had votes in both those places before. Those are the only really things that have been altered. Language is consistent to the legal requirements and standards of all the warnings that we've offered to the community. And most of the language is identical to what the May, March 5th warning was.
So any comments or questions from the board on this? So the confusion that comes up is that we had a previous warning with a different budget amount and a different date for vote and different polling locations. So we need to be very clear with voters, very clear with folks in all of our towns that this is the appropriate budget. This is the budget we're voting on. Any ballots that have been received previously are no longer ballots that we're going to use for voting. And that all of the Mount Mansfield articles will be voted on together on April 2nd. I don't want to say it wrong. And then again, as John mentioned, as fast as we can get this signed by a majority of board members, we can get ballots printed, get reports printed, get everything mailed out again to voters.
Yes.
Do you think it's appropriate to go through the budget page on our website and remove the previous warning? I don't know how that works historically, but it is still there. So just making sure that when people are coming through looking for information, they don't come across that instead of this.
Yep.
And for my parliamentarians, we don't need to vote on the warning. We just need to sign the warning. Is that accurate? Or do we need to actually vote on the warning?
I would vote on it. I can't hurt. I'll make a motion to approve the warning.
Thank you. Thank you. So motion made by Andrew and seconded by Gail. Thank you. All in favor of approving the warning. Can I get a thumb or an aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, great, thank you. Should we, why don't you talk, Katie, just for a minute about some of the ways that we're going to let our, the public know, let the folks in our five towns know about these changes besides updating the website?
Well, I'll look for support from the administration as well, but I, so we'll do a porch forum. I've inquired, I, I would like us to have a strong presence at our voting.
Town meeting day votes?
Town meeting day votes, so that we can help to answer questions and direct people. And we'll be updating the website and then, I don't know, we'll have the what is it?
The flyer.
The flyer and then all the time on the spot here. And then the report, the annual report.
Revised annual report, we'll have the budget flyer, we'll have all, you know, updated information on the website.
Which is mostly information that people would usually have in their hands by now. Are the board, are we getting? And we'll do all contact libraries in, what is the name of the Jericho? Deborah Ross. Deborah, Deborah Ross Libraries and Ross and Library and the Richmond Library. And try to get informal meetings likely on a Saturday. Now that this is passed and we have the time to move before the vote for informational meetings for the communities. So we're going to have two formal, rightly said, two formal, John, two formal informational meetings.
March 14th and March 28th.
So on Thursday nights, the 14th and the 28th, where we have a full slideshow and a full review of the budget and how that looks. And then we'll have two in, hopefully, we haven't just, we don't have them, we don't have the dates yet. Looking for them. I, I would try to pay attention to our porch forum, our website and word of mouth.
We will mail a flyer to every resident in the district, all five towns.
A thousand.
Is it possible, John, to push out an alert, a text alert, in the same way that we would if there was a snow day? I do think text is a good way to get through to parents and households. I know that will miss a lot of residents who don't have kids in the school, but.
I think we did something like that last year, so we could do that.
Maybe just send them to that landing page that's got all the information.
Yep.
And maybe we do that on Tuesday on Town Meeting Day, so folks know that that's not the day to vote, but it's not in the middle of vacation when it could get missed. It's at the end of vacation when it could get missed instead. But maybe that's, yeah, we'll figure out on the right day. Ethan?
Just wondering if anything, any support for town clerks? I know this is an extra vote for them. Is there any communication that we need to do with our town clerks?
I sent an update yesterday and once this was finalized, I have drafted one and that is in my draft box that I'll send out tomorrow.
Oh, that's excellent.
Yeah, we've been regularly in touch with them. And we know that there's confusion and we know that this is a bigger lift than normal and we apologize. It's not something that we did. It's something that we're trying to work within the new system. But it's, that's a good call out because it's not just us and the voters and the, you know, the residents and the people in the schools that are confused. It's there, you know, there are a lot of moving parts, so that's a good call out.
One question just associated that, that's been asked of me is if people haven't sent, I don't know what the, the timeline's probably pretty close here, if they haven't sent in their ballots for mailing, do they send in both ballots even though that first one is now invalid or does it matter?
It doesn't really matter because one of the updates that I shared, and this came from the Secretary of State, that was that if you are getting ballots that are mailed that said inside, you don't process them and they're essentially void. But you want to still vote on your town ballots and articles that are coming from the town.
Okay, so it doesn't matter if it gets sent in or not, it'll just get, it won't get counted essentially. Yep.
Won't get processed, won't long get counted.
Well, thanks for all the work on this. It is a big lift and appreciate the recognition and the change. And I think it's a, I think it's a budget, so happy to get it passed.
Other questions or comments?
The flyer you mentioned, they're going to all the citizens, you know, what do I think of the union there?
To open for two weeks before the vote. That's our goal. Of course, we've had to provide everything. And we wanted to make sure that there were no changes tonight before we, you know, finalized anything. Because that would just make people more confused. But we have a really good draft. And I think we'll, our goal is to have it to the printer by Friday.
And it can be on our website before that.
Yep, as soon as it's ready, we'll post that on the website, make sure it's mailed to people. At least two weeks before is the goal, but ASAP.
I see a community hand, but I just want to make sure board members, any other questions, comments? And then are we open to community comments at this point? You have an bird, yes? Okay, so I have Sarah and then Erin. And again, your name and your town again, please.
I'm Sarah Riley. I'm in Underhill. First, first a suggestion that, you know, not everybody looks at Front Porch Forum. I'm just going to mention that. And the, the notice of this meeting today I received in my front porch forum that came in my email yesterday at 5:05 PM. The website told me it was tomorrow. So maybe updating the website ought to kind of get a little more important, including maybe putting a button that says revised vote information on the top page because it's very hard to figure out where the heck in all that information this, this information is. Also, you might try putting information out or at least a pointer to a URL on town Facebook pages saying, hey, people in these towns, Underhill has several, Jericho has stuff, West, you know. You could put out information about where to go to find this, these, this information online in more places than just a mailing. I happen to be located remotely now and I am voting remotely. And by the way, yes, I signed up yesterday to get my school ballot mailed to me. That happens separately and can be done now. There's one other thing that you could do. I admit, I'm associated with the Mountain Gazette, but the Mountain Gazette would love to publish information for free about the vote and what, where to go to find information. But specific information, not the generalized MMU USD page, that is not helpful. That part I say is a taxpayer. I'm finding communication for non-experts in the field and not board members. I recognize that you've had a lot to do. I really truly do. And I don't envy you having to understand this mess of a law that we're stuck with. But communication could be better, speaking as a voter. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are some good suggestions. I appreciate that. Erin?
Hi, just a quick question and I noticed that Linda
Full name and town.
Oh, sorry. Erin Wag and I'm from Richmond. And I also vote remotely and I'm wondering, I know that some of the documentation says that if you don't send back everything, then though your vote won't count or it gets confusing. I was just wondering if Linda could comment on that. Thanks.
So I don't, I don't. We have one town clerk here or we, I think John's been talking to the Secretary of State.
Yes, I have.
Yeah, can I throw something out here?
Yeah, let me, let me have John answer that first and then absolutely, Linda, we can do that. So the new information from the Secretary of State, because the information, folks are, everybody has been getting, who has been getting ballots are told that if they don't send it all back together, their vote isn't valid. So there's nothing wrong with sending everything back. However, if you don't send the no longer valid school ballot back, that will not invalidate your vote.
I don't, I haven't, that's not, that is coming from the guidance from the Secretary of State. It's not to process them.
Okay, so we can, we can confirm that. Erin, Linda, I don't know, do you have guidance from the Secretary of State on that?
Yes.
I do too.
Can I say something?
Sure.
Anybody that's got one of the school ballots, they can send it back, not send it back, we don't care. We will just be hanging on to all of them. Like I've got 300 of them back. And we're waiting for John to figure out where they want us to put all these because we don't have room in our individual town halls to keep all these old ballots that are going to, which are basically completely worthless. And we've been fielding all the calls from the people that have come in to vote and all that. And I would just like to say that this whole thing has been a disaster. And John knows how I feel about the whole thing. And I have spoken to several people that are on the school board and not just Richmond people. And I think that they were not really informed on how this was going to work or what we had to do. And the five town clerks asked me to be the spokesperson and I sent out an email, which I'm, it took me two days because I was seething when it was time to do it. And I'm very disappointed that I did not hear back from anybody about that email. And I'm sure you all know which one it is. If people had considered the five town clerks and invited us to an earlier meeting, I think we would have saved this district, you know, thousands of dollars. And I do not care if the state says they're paying for it. $500,000 is not going to pay all the fees for this vote, for the whole state. And that's just coming out of people's pockets, yours on. And in the bottom line, you should have really listened to the five town clerks because we were all consistent and agreed on everything. And I don't think there was good communication.
I appreciate that. And I forgot to ask you to state your name and your town before you started.
Oh, it's Linda Parent. I'm the town clerk in Richmond.
Thank you. Somebody else had a hand up? Did I miss that? Okay, great. Yeah, so, so just in response to those comments, and this is not a back and forth, this is a, we are, we have been working as the legis, as a school board, as the legislature is passing laws or they're passing laws, getting information and getting it out as quickly and as clearly as we possibly can. And as I started the meeting with, this is the most complicated and complex budget we've ever had to do, situation, timeline we've ever had. And a lot of people have been very frustrated and uncomfortable with this. And it's causing an incredible amount of discomfort that most of us are not happy with. So, yeah, official apologies to all the clerks. I did visit Linda in person and I have been very much engaged in what is going on here since. Other questions, comments? I know there was a question earlier about taxes and there will be more information in our budget presentation, but there, it's just like every other year where we have some information now and a lot of information comes out later in the year as the yield is finally set. So we will do our best with the information that we have in the budget presentation. I don't know if you want to talk about that a little bit more. We do have five towns, which even complicates things more.
Yes, we have, on our website, we have how the estimated tax rate of district is calculated in a graph that will also be in the flyer and how the
And how the common level of appraisal is going to impact individual towns. A little bit about how the common level of appraisal is affecting the tax rate and how our school district budget is affecting the tax rate. And more information around how Vermont tries to equalize the tax rates based on where the common level appraisal is in each town. Have you been reassessed? Have you not been reassessed? We talked a little bit about this at the last meeting, but the, there, it's supposed to be, there's an equalization factor. So, if your common level of appraisal is, you know, 80% of 100% fair market value, your tax rate is, goes up. But the value of your house is not at fair market value. So, it's a, it's a higher rate on a lower amount. The opposite is true. If you have a reappraisal, then your tax rate is lower, but the value of your home is higher. So, the, it's supposed to be work that if you have a $400,000 or $300,000 home in Richmond, that is 100% fair market value and one that is the same amount in Underhill, that you're paying the same tax rate. You're not paying any more than you're not paying any less.
But John, I think it's helpful for people to hear that all we can do is estimate it. We don't actually set the tax rate. That is unfortunately nothing that we control. It's completely out of our control. We all get our tax bills at the same time and see what the rate's going to be. But all we can do is provide our best estimate for people to see, which is what those informational slides will show people at our future informational meetings.
That's a good point. We underline estimate on everything because what we're sharing with people is an estimate. We won't know the final education funding formula till the end of the legislative session.
Sarah Riley, Underhill. So, we're voting blind, right?
So, I'm sorry.
Squinting.
Wait, wait, please, please, sorry. This is a board meeting, not an information meeting. So, we're trying to make sure that everything is managed the same way that we manage it at a board meeting. So, to answer your question, as we do every year, this is the same as every year. We do, we put our budget together to meet the needs of our district and to try to keep costs as affordable as we possibly can. We really have a, a low budget for Chittenden County, low for people spending for, for Chittenden County. And when we put the information out, we only have some of the information that is put into the calculation of what everybody's tax rate is going to be. And this is not different this year. This is the same as every other year. In April, May, when does the yield come out? April or May, I think, is when the yield comes out. And that is the final piece of information that all of the tax rate. So, we have an estimate of what that will be. So, it is close to what it will be. There is usually some kind of change as we get closer to that date. Can you explain? Can I explain?
Can you just say?
Yeah, so the way, the way school taxes work in Vermont is that every district puts their budget together and they send those budgets into the state. And the state understands how much money there is to spend. And that money comes from property taxes statewide, from homestead taxes, from non-homestead property taxes. From, that's about, the home, the, the home tax is about a third. Two thirds come from the non-homestead tax and the sales and use tax. And so, that giant, giant pot of money, it is the most money that Vermont spends on anything, on schools, is divided up. And the yield is the amount that is used to balance how much is needed outside of the property taxes. So, the education fund is self-leveling and that is how it is leveled the end of the year. After all of the budgets have passed, which is May.
April 15th.
Yeah, this year. Yeah, but there's another date in case they don't pass. Isn't there? No?
I think they tried to have it by April.
April 15th. So, after that is when that amount comes out. Somebody who understands this want to add more to that? Just wanted to make clarify, clarifying. It's, it's, it, yes. So, that's how it works in Vermont. It's not how it works in most states.
I think, Edie, what you're saying is it's something to engage with your, your, your town reps on, your legislators on. This is not policy that's set by your local school board. This is statewide policy. So, when you bring your concerns here, we're happy to hear them. But also, our hands are tied because we don't determine that statewide policy.
Yep, we advocate for changes, right? But that's all we can do. And all we can do is set a budget for our district that is needs-based and is not exorbitant. Yep.
Can I throw in my two cents here? I think it's important to remember that this whole pile of formulas and calculations is a result of the Brigham decision years ago to, essentially that we need to provide equal opportunity to students. And I, and I firmly believe that that's the case. If, if there's any good that's come out of this mess that we're all going through this year is I think that it's really shown a light on how complicated and difficult our current funding mechanism and voting and calculations are and how it's challenging for school board members, including, a lot of us who've been around for a long time to even understand what's going on. And I'm hopeful that the legislature hears that and hears, and takes that message and thinks about if there's a way that we can do things differently that hopefully is more transparent or clearer or at least more predictable. That's my hope.
Gail, did you have something you wanted to add?
And I'm right. I saved it down the street and used it to per CLA or college in prison. They seem uninterested. They start talking about hers and she's the nice girl. My way of describing what's going on with this is property taxes on houses. Let's just say that property taxes, where you live, property taxes on your houses are not fair unless all the houses in the state are at 100% market value. Doesn't matter where you're here, where you're installed, where you are. If you're going to have a property tax on a house, then it won't work unless every house is at market value. And not, Vermont attacks us, no, it's not true. So, they make up a formula that make every house appear to be at market value. And that's what they're trying to do. It's not possible, but it, that's why we're doing it. And as long as we stay on the property tax, it's not going to change. Property tax, all the houses have to be appraised at exactly market value. And nobody knows what their house is at market value anyway. So, they do it by town. But if it's not by the town, if there's, they're trying to get market value. They're trying to get 100% market value on every house in our state.
At the same time. Okay, I think we have done as best explanation as possible about all of these issues as possible. I promised you all this would not be a long meeting, but I want to make sure that we cover everything that we need to cover. So, last call, board members, anything else? So, moving on to other business then, I just want to say first, thank you to board members and community members that have been following this closely because this has not been easy. Thank you to John and Nicole and Brett for being here today, but for doing extra work over school break because schools should be closed right now. And thank you to our board members who are not running for reelection. This is the last board meeting and it's a, it's a doozy. So, thank you. We do officially celebrate our board members who are leaving their service at the Golden Apple Awards in May. So, look forward to that celebration also, which means we didn't re-broke them back in. So, thank you to everybody for that. Is there any other business?
I'd just like to thank board members that are not recurring as well. And I've had the good fortune to work with a lot of really great board members. So, I have a ton of respect for and admiration in the work that you do. Means a lot to the community and the students. And I just heartfelt, sincere thank you.
Our next meeting is March 11th. That's a Monday. That's after Town Meeting Day. So, even with all of this confusion about when we're voting on budgets, we are voting for board members on Town Meeting Day because that's part of the town vote. So, please vote for your board members in your towns that have votes that are open. And then, so at our next meeting, we'll do a reorganization. We'll talk about committees. We'll figure all of that out and probably a few other things that I'm not prepared to talk about today because I haven't looked. I've been spending an awful lot of time on this stuff. Anything else? Can I get a motion to adjourn? Thanks, Heather. Gail, thank you for seconding. All in favor, give me a thumb and then sign off and I'll see y'all in March. Have a good week of vacation if you're on vacation and thank you so much for being here tonight.